Oh my god, this is all homely. Who are you? All right, we're on the air. I'd like to call to order the meeting for the Thursday, September 2nd, Planning Board meeting. If everybody would please rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public. For which it stands, one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So I would like to introduce our board members now. To my left, we have Jerry Grayville, Paul Emma Tucci, Vice Chairman Mike LaRue. Allison, is your last name Hurlahy still?
For a little bit, yes.
Okay, just got married last weekend or so.
I'll figure it out.
Phil Roy and Amber Pecto at home in her new house on Cranberry Meadow Road. We also have the current town planner, future town manager, James Bellissimo. And it looks like Jenny, oh, she was, Jenny's at the ball fields. She's our code enforcement officer, she's here as well. So after that, I would like to open the public comment session. Public comment session is open to anybody under the purview of the Berwick Planning Board. If, the only thing that we ask is that you do not make any comments or questions about anything that's an active item on our agendas. Seeing nobody come forward, I'm going to close the public comment session and move on to the approval of minutes from the August 19th, 2021 meeting. Did everybody have an opportunity to review the minutes? Any changes? Wow, James, just when you started to get good at this.
I know, finally.
Three for three, and he's gonna leave us. So then I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move that we approve the minutes as written.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second, all in favor. All right, looks like that passed through with flying colors. Onto new business. The first item on the agenda for new business is the subdivision amendment, which is the creation of one lot on Cemetery Road, which is in the R2 zone. Like, who are we? Lou, you're on. If you would, so the microphone does, does move. And Bobby Joe would love it if you would walk around with it. And we've got that in the right spot, so take it away. They would like you to keep your mask up, please, thank you.
I can do that. Thank you, Ms. Chair, members of the board. Lou Chamberlain from Atar Engineering. And I'm representing Mr. Tim Doan tonight, and he is here with me. And we've submitted a subdivision amendment application for the Cemetery Road subdivision, which is a 14-lot subdivision approved by the Planning Board back in 2005. And the focus of our amendment is to take Lot 14, which was an original lot in the subdivision, and divide it into two lots. And the result would be a 15-lot subdivision. That lot is about eight acres, and we'd be creating a about a four-and-a-half-acre lot, calling it Lot 14B, and about a two-and-a-half-acre lot, calling it Lot 14A. And so it's a simple division. There's, there's a couple of nice building envelopes, there's test pits, there'll be subsurface wastewater disposal systems for each home, and plenty of room for wells. The original lot of the subdivision was eight acres about here. And there was, there's a right-of-way across Lot 13 of the original subdivision that provided access to that. And so what we're gonna do is utilize that. And we're gonna extend the right-of-way a couple hundred feet and provide an area for a turnaround for emergency vehicles and get frontage off of those, that extension of the right-of-way to enable the two lots. And so we've submitted a full application. There was a stormwater management plan done for the whole subdivision, and we've updated that. Basically, this, this lot was developed as part of the existing subdivision. This would be the lot added, and we're gonna propose to treat stormwater with a wooded buffer, and it really doesn't have any impact on the stormwater. So if there's any questions, we would be glad to answer. Thank you.
Is that right-of-way paved, or is that a gravel right-of-way? And what's the plan if it is gravel?
It is going to be gravel, basically a shared driveway.
Yep.
Yep. Correct.
Is there a reason why they didn't go for 15 lots when they originally had it approved?
I think it had to do with permitting. You know, 14 lots didn't require a state permit. 15 lots would have required a site law permit.
Yeah.
And so they offered the 14 lots for sale. And once five years goes by, you can go for that additional lot. And of course, we're approaching 15 years.
Oh yeah, you're way beyond that, yep.
But that was the reason they didn't.
Copy that. Question, Jerry?
I have nothing at this point.
I don't see the frontage on here, because my copy is very small. Do you have, or can you tell me what the road frontage is on these two lots? Because this right-of-way, it's hard to
Yep.
see that it's providing enough frontage.
So for Lot 14B,
Yes.
there's a, there's a number of sections of the right-of-way that add up to about, I think it's about 230 feet where 150 is required. And it starts right here, there's 50 feet right here, and then there's 77 feet. And then there's another 67 along the curve. And then another 40 or so at the end of the, the old right-of-way. So this, this all, this line right here all fronts on this lot.
Okay.
And then this one, of course, has this yellow line right there, and that's in excess.
Okay, so I'm, yeah, I was
So the current survey does not include the deeded right-of-way. Am I correct in that assumption?
The current survey.
So I'm, in order for that lot near the top of the, to have the appropriate frontage, that deeded right-of-way would have to be extended.
That's right.
Okay, so is that gonna be on a new survey, or is that just something that?
It's right on this plan.
It is, okay, all right, excellent.
Yeah, it is on there. It was just, it was just hard to see at first. I see it now.
I see.
There was not enough on the original, the original plan for this. When this was eight acres, the frontage was right there.
Right, right. That's what makes sense, and that's what it looks like.
And so we're kind of, yep.
Mrs. Pecto, any questions?
I don't have any questions yet.
No, I think I'm good.
Mr. Bellissimo, what do you have to say to us, anything?
I, I don't have anything to add. I know the sub, original subdivider is here today. This is your subdivision, right, Mr. Hall? Are you, I'm just curious, are you here in support of the application, or just here for? Okay, just sometimes with the original subdivider, they, they, you know the ins and outs of it, so just curious. But good, good to hear, good to see you. Thank you.
I have a question. What's the, what additional impact is there on newer butters with this?
I, I don't believe there's
Are there any newer butters?
There are really no additional impacts on a butter, I wouldn't think, yeah. I mean, it's one, one more lot, so, you know, the folks along Shelley Lane will have to, you know, look at a house behind there, but they built in the same subdivision, so.
Do you, do you reason for us to do, like, a public hearing on this or anything?
I think, I think so. I mean, I, I think it's good to notice the butters and
Okay.
It's, we follow the
Yeah, we follow the Yeah, okay, yep. That makes sense.
What's that?
We're, we're fine with that.
Okay, yep. Yeah, I think it'd be application complete tonight, and then schedule the public hearing for the 16th.
The 16th is gonna be a bearish day here, so, just so you know.
I have another one for that night.
Yeah, yeah, we've got, yeah, I think we're gonna have two or three public hearings that night, so it's gonna be, and, yeah. Okay, so on that note, any other questions from anybody? So I say that we, I'm looking for a motion for application completeness.
I'll make a motion to approve for completeness.
All right, thank you. Thank you. So I have a motion and a second, all in favor. All right, we got everybody, great. So we will continue on with this. We'll put you on for the 16th. Bring some popcorn that night, everybody. And some water.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, guys. Yeah, you don't have to stay, you can go. So next on the agenda is a change of use, Medical Marijuana Storefront to Medical Marijuana Dispensary, or is it just Marijuana Dispensary? At 357 Portland Street, which is Kind Farms.
Yeah, it's changed from Medical Marijuana Storefront to a Medical Marijuana Dispensary. Actually, I should let Paul into the waiting
Yeah, that would be nice.
Licensing and allowance of way more. A dispensary can do way more than a caregiver can.
Hey, Paul, how's it going?
Paul, you're on mute.
Of course he is. I think we'd figure it out in two years.
There we go.
I'm sorry, you guys, I'm not feeling very well, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, it's all good. Hi, everyone, I hope everybody's doing well, staying safe.
Thanks, Paul.
Absolutely. I was just going over, I was just summarizing your application, realized you weren't in here. So I'll just pick back up. So the applicant stated it's not gonna change the day-to-day operations of the stores. This would be a substitution of a use for another use, so there's no impact on the cap. I just made a note that if you look at our land use table, the, the retail store, the dispensary on the, on the same row, I think there's differences in scales in terms of cultivation. But I think I, it's okay with the chair turning it over to Paul to kind of explain
Absolutely.
why, what, what's the purpose of the, of the change?
Yeah, I think that would be ideal.
Hi, guys. Well, this change of use is largely administrative, and it, it's sort of a proactive move on our part. The state of Maine in January of this year alleviated the cap on official state dispensaries. And the difference, we're a caregiver storefront, and there might be some upcoming changes to the medical laws. And so this is largely for our organizational structure and how we structured our company, because it has multiple owners. And a dispensary allows for multiple owners, and there's possibilities that with the new medical laws coming around, it'll be a sole proprietorship. And so it's really just largely administrative and structural in the way that our company is set up, and it doesn't really change anything operational at all.
That's kind of what I
And it would allow us to open up a second store somewhere in the state if we found a, a place, you know, somewhere else.
So Paul, what you're saying is that functionally, there is no difference between what that store can do currently as a storefront than it can do as a dispensary? Is there no difference in function whatsoever?
That's correct. And on the retail level, there's absolutely no difference. We're still under the same set of laws, and so nothing changes.
So there's no production or growing or anything in that facility? It's still just retail?
Yeah, it's just retail.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. LaRue, you always have good clarifiers for us.
Now, this is just kind of like a, on slightly off topic, but is there gonna be future ideas of cultivation on that site? Like, because with a dispensary, you could have almost limitless size. So you would assume that you'd be building a bigger facility for cultivation compared to a caregiver.
You're definitely right, Mike. It does allow for that, we're not planning on that. We still have the building on the lot next door, which was 12-2, pardon me. And we're not planning on changing the size or the scale of that at all. So for us, it's, that is an additional thing, but for us, it's largely just administrative.
Okay, cool, yeah. I don't know if it's the right venue, but the only, the only question I would have is, as the business has gained popularity and more traffic on that, what I perceive to be a very busy thoroughfare, my only concern is as you increase your throughput of customers, is there any future plan for, for traffic management in that area? Does that lie on us, or does that lie in an agreement with the
DOT?
Business owner slash DOT? Where, where do we fit in on that? Because I, I perceive that it could become an issue, because there is a lot more traffic in that area. So I just want to make sure that we are aware and planning for the, for the future on that, so we don't have, you know, more stuff that our resources, you know, our limited resources and public safety have to respond to.
Yeah, that's all DOT out there, isn't it, on Route 4?
It is, okay.
Because I remember you had to go through some, some extensive stuff just to get your driveway in properly and whatnot.
Correct.
Yeah, so, I mean, this seems pretty straightforward to me. What is the, how do we handle this, James?
I think for Route, just to go back on Route 4, I think there's all kinds of safety concerns there.
There are.
I think we need to come up with maybe a citizen-led vision process for Route 4.
It needs a middle lane, like, it needs a middle turning, so people can get into it and return.
They added the middle lane when the credit
For the bank.
ATM, but now it needs to be extended down.
Yeah, it does.
Because I live right across from Kind Farm.
Yeah.
And I've seen two close calls. My wife had to pull off the road the other week because somebody almost hit her.
Yeah.
So it's gonna happen, and it's gonna happen soon.
I mean, we've already had people killed, two people killed out there in the last 10 years, right? Yeah.
It's a dangerous road.
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure it's we're aware and
Yeah, we should put it to the front burner.
Good thought.
So for tonight, I think you find the application complete and approve it tonight.
Okay, we don't need to, yeah, do anything. All right, so I'm looking for a motion for the application complete for the change of use for the Medical Marijuana Storefront to Marijuana Dispensary.
I move that we find the application complete.
And a second?
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor. Okay, that's, we got everybody. And then I am looking for a motion to approve the change of use from Medical Marijuana Storefront to a medical, or to Marijuana Dispensary 357 Portland Street, Kind Farms. Make the motion to approve. All right, so move.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second, everybody in favor? All right, we've got everybody. Thank you very much. Thanks, Paul, hope you feel better.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, stay safe, stay healthy.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Moving right along like we do. Next order business is major subdivision. This is a sketch plan meeting, so of a major subdivision, six lots, Diamond Hill Road, R3 zone. Just to remind everybody, for anything that's on our agenda, we cannot take any public comments. Major subdivisions have been a point of contention lately, so we cannot take any comments from the public until the actual public hearing for this application. On that note.
I'll just cover my couple of
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
There's a waiver for, waiver request for open space, number one. Number two, this lot was historically used for wood ash, which can cause high levels of arsenic. There were, at one time, it was studied, and there was high levels of arsenic found. At one point, DEP recommended as a solution was to bring in Phil for the entire site. Since then, Ransom has done another study, and, and they are suggesting that the arsenic is naturally occurring. My suggestion is to send DEP both their initial letter, send it to them, and send in the ransom study, and just have them send us back another recommendation. Have them just go, well, it looks to be good, or, or really, I think
This on public utility or private?
No, this would be private well, so that's a, that's a pretty expensive mitigation system for
But I'd be curious what applicant thinks. Other than that, my recommendation would be if, if everything's okay for a site walk, we schedule it for October 7th.
Yeah, definitely. And we wouldn't be doing, I don't see a full application here anyway, so we would be, would we have them in, I mean, we can't schedule a site walk or a public hearing without
Sketch plan, site walk.
Sketch plan, site walk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Steve, I was Civil Works. The owner of the property is Mike Sitkowski, he's here as well. He purchases from Steve Brown a while ago. Location is at the top of Diamond Hill. There were two lots, two conventional lots out front, and there's actually a right-of-way that goes between those two that accesses the 22 acres out back. Can you hear me?
It is on.
Should you see a green light?
So what, what this proposal, we've been in talk with Jim before, James, sorry. And we've come, we talked about the different aspects of the subdivision. He had actually brought up the 2002 report that was done by Gillespie that identified some background arsenic here. So immediately after that conversation, Mike went out and had Ransom do a totally independent study, trying to take a look at the same thing. And their conclusion, based on the information that they have, and they did a more extensive review than was done in 2002, as evidenced by a 455-page report. And their conclusion was that this is arsenic background, it is above the, the recommended elevations, but it is background information, background levels. I have no problem, that's a good idea. Give it back to DOT, I'm sorry, DES and DP, and see if they have any questions on that. But in general, what we understand is that even from the state's perspective, you know, subdivision is allowable on, on this as well, since it's a single family. There's no municipal services other than, you know, maybe just coming by for garbage. But cul-de-sac length meets your requirements. What we show right here is a conventional lot layout. So there's 22 acres, this would be six lots, so Mike would be looking to keep Lot 6, which would be about eight acres, and the rest of them would be combined in the five lots themselves. His idea being that he'd like to have more of a pastoral feeling for the subdivision, because he's gonna live there, so he's not trying to cram them all in there. So what James had identified was, we understand that each subdivision would like to have open space, which we don't disagree with at all, but with the oversized lots that we're looking at here being consistent with what's out front right now, we're asking, you know, would that be something the board would be, I'm sorry if you guys can't see me, I apologize, if the board would be amenable to a waiver in this case for a subdivision like this? So I'd like to have that conversation tonight, if you guys have any input regards to that.
Would we have to make a decision on a waiver grant tonight? Without having gone out to the property or anything? I mean, I don't have
No.
Oh, okay.
I think you can reserve your right to hold on.
Yeah, I would, I would. I'm not a big fan of granting waivers, but I'd like to see the property before I
So I'm not asking for, yeah, I'm not asking for any, for, for you guys to vote on anything tonight. We brought that forth, just so you guys have an idea of where we're going with that. I mean, there, there's ways to do this as well, to show additional open space. But the idea was that, that, to try to keep it as wide open as possible. It is a moat field, it is what you see in this, in here. This is all field, and it has a fantastic view. I'm sure you guys are all aware of Diamond Hill.
We have like a full application packet, like, do you have it?
No, it's, it's just, it's the
This is just sketch review.
Right, right, okay. I just didn't know, sometimes sketch, they come in with everything, so.
We, we had that conversation.
I'm like, I need stuff.
For sure that we just want to have a conversation. We're not asking you guys to make any decisions tonight, so that we could have this conversation without any real, you know, put anyone on the spot kind of thing. But, you know, Mike is here, young man, young family, couple of kids, definitely wants to move up here. He's a contractor as well, so a lot of the work he'd do himself in terms of, he's electrician, electrical and, correct, in general contracting as well. So that, that's the idea, take 22 acres, make six fairly large, two-acre-plus lots and eight acre for, for him out back over here. And that's the starting point. So any feedback you guys can give us at this point, sans a site walk, would like to hear from you. Like I said, you do, you do know we had Ransom do the report, so they redid that. I think you do have, do they have the executive summary in their packet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a question for the landowner. It, in the event, because it is a slippery slope when you grant waivers, because it sets a precedent for future applicants.
Yeah.
Your, your large lot at the end, that's the one that you intend to keep? Would you be amenable to making some of that public space as a condition of approval? Would you be amenable to that? That way, it would not require a waiver, is that something you'd consider?
I think I'd have to look at somewhat of a design to see what it is, but I don't know. Depending on how the public would access it, hopefully it would be
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, generally, the public doesn't use it, but in this, do you live in Berwick right now? Okay, so in this town, we are real big on open space. That is, I mean, open space, protecting wetlands, and, and controlling the population in the schools are the three big hot buttons. So it's unlikely, I mean, I'm gonna tell you, it's unlikely that I would vote to waive almost anything that I, that I get waiver requests for, particularly hot-button items. But, but we'll, we'll look at it when we're out there, I mean
It sets a precedent if we do it for
I know, it's, it's only like one acre, because it's 5% right?
Yeah.
It's only like one acre.
It's an acre to two acres, so you just said something, it rang something in my brain.
Yeah.
You said something, it just went away.
I get that all the time.
Oh, gee. Oh, public access to the open space, or is the open space for the subdivision?
You can have the open space just for the subdivision, doesn't have to be public access, right?
Yeah, that was a point. Typically, it's just for
Like, we're not, we're never gonna build on this.
Yeah, recreational.
Yeah, I, I think, if that's, after the site walk, if that's where you guys want to go with it, I think there's opportunity to do that and still keep, keep a, you know, fairly substantial subdivision. But when you guys go up there and take a look at it, see what
That wasn't task direction by any means, it's just a question to, you know, see, see what you're amenable to.
Honestly, my, my biggest thing with this is I'm coming from, you know, just north of Boston, where I live, I gotta buy a thousand square foot lot with my house on it. I'm looking to move to that space, but we have all this space, but we have this, we have separation from
Bobby Joe's gonna come out and yell at you, because you're not talking into a microphone. I'm just predicting, I can hear her and they're moving around.
Sorry about that. So what I was saying was, I, I came from a very small city-like area. I'm over it, I want to move my family up here, you know, I want to develop my business further up here. I want big lots, I want space for my kids, I want the big lot. That's why I wasn't trying to do everything by
Right.
the setbacks, everything, not trying to jam 53 houses and 20 acres.
That's good.
It's not the intent at all.
Do you have no intentions on adding lots to this?
No.
I don't think he's got the frontage to do it anyway. So that's my next question, is the minimum frontage is 300 feet, but on Lot 3 and Lot 4, I see 240 feet for frontage.
So with your, with your rules for cul-de-sac?
Is it because it's on the cul-de-sac? Okay, all right, thank you.
And, and we try to make it bigger than that minimum as well.
I mean, I will make a note, you guys do a but, a 100-acre parcel that's landlocked, so you have a potential for, you know, tapping in. I just make it known that
Right, right, yeah.
You know, if you come in, if you, it's great for you if you come in and you get access to that, that lot, but that's possible.
Well, thanks, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah. It's been on the market, it's, yeah.
I don't, I don't know if we've had a conversation with that, but I, I think right now, the issue is, is, like you just said, I mean, from all the conversations, how Eric was, I want a big piece of property.
Yeah, yeah.
I want to talk real quickly about the, the reports themselves, and what, what DEP had had recommended, or would be remediation for arsenic and so forth. And then we actually did have a conversation with Ransom as well, to find out what type of situation, something like this with, with background arsenic, is actually, how does that get remediated if it needs to at all? So there were several conversations, and, and this is something that we'll, we'll flesh out with DEP as well, is a house on it covers it, a driveway covers on it, and if it's grassed and undeveloped that way, it, it actually is considered fairly stable as well. Another reason why having really large lots here for that, because that was, not, not that, not Eric had ever thought about more than six lots here, but keeping these fairly large and spreading everyone out was, was also the idea of minimizing that potential for, you know, we got 15 houses on, on a 25 acres or 22 acres, you're disturbing more area. Because he's gonna live here. I mean, this, this is his house, so he's, he's much more concerned about it than, than otherwise. But the reality of, and I think you said you're a Realtor?
Yeah.
Yeah, so being, having disclosing this to everyone is paramount. And so this information, and James, we, we actually didn't quite know about that at the very beginning, because it was, you know, he brought it up and says, oops, let's go take a look at it. So we're trying to do as, as much but as little as possible for looking at. So that, that's the extent of it. If we can, if you guys want to go for a site walk, which I think you said you would, that'd be great, and then just we can have a conversation relative to, you know, open space, if it's, if it's a deeded area. Then there's conversation too, when you're talking about open space for a subdivision, are you guys more inclined to have, like, additional area around the outside, or like a set aside?
I think it has to be, it has to be made up of, doesn't have to be, and it can't just be like, oh, this is like a little I think it has to be, it has to be made up of, doesn't have to be, it can't just be like, oh, this is like a little thing, right? Doesn't it have to be like a clump of land and not wetlands? I think we have it written out somewhere.
There are standards. I mean, it could be.
Yeah, we have.
So the answer is don't do the perimeter.
Don't do that. Just.
Show, do something.
Yeah, let's find the 5%, pop it on there and, and make it happen.
It has to be accessible from the right of way.
Understood. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it could be, it could be a footpath and it could be something that you keep mowed and the kids can go out and play soccer. I mean, it's not like, you know, it doesn't have to be a thing, but they are big on open space. I have a question. So actually, as far as real estate goes, I don't, you don't have to disclose if there's something in the soil. I mean, you should, but it's not a disclosure, but my concern would be with, with the water, like wells.
So.
Because that is a disclosure issue. And that's a, that's a very expensive mitigation system.
So very good question because we actually had the exact same question when we found this out. And I went back and, and these, the houses out front over here, they've had no, they've had nothing that, that's indicative of any issues or special methodology for taking care of the water.
Okay, that's good.
So that, that goes hand in hand kind of with what Ransom was saying. This is like background arsenic, which as it turns out, that's Berwick.
Yeah, it's everywhere. I mean, it is everywhere. We don't have a lot of, I mean, I haven't run into arsenic in our water here. We get a lot of iron in our water, but I haven't run into a lot of arsenic in the water, but.
So we, so we are cognizant of that and we're trying to try and address that as well. So, so when, when I was, when the indicating disclosure.
Yeah.
What Eric had said is anyone who comes to buy a lot is going to know this.
Yeah.
This is not one of those things where gee, we're not, no one knows about it. So.
Best, best bet. Yeah, that's your best bet.
Yeah. So that, that's, that's it. That's as far as we want to go. So if you guys have anything, any other suggestion, questions at this point or that, that's it.
Thank you guys. No. Specto, you got anything?
There, there's a, is there a cemetery on the lot, lot lines?
Yes, there is.
That might be a good spot for some of the open space.
Well, it has, it has a natural buffer anyways. You can't do anything around it, which is actually incorporated into, you don't have to do it because of 25 feet, but in this area here. So
Okay.
it is there.
Okay.
And it's identified on, it would be identified on that lot as well.
Mrs. Specto, do you have any questions? I don't want to ignore you.
No, my only question is about the soil, but that's been addressed. So I'm all set. I'm looking forward to the plate walk.
Me too.
Yep, good.
Mr. Amatucci?
Yeah, my concern was as yours, the, the well water. And that's, that's got to be a hot button as well.
Mr. Graybell? Good. Alright, so, Larue? No? Site walk October 2nd?
7th.
7th? At what time?
Nice fall foliage walk.
It's going to start getting, well, it shouldn't be too bad.
When's daylight savings time? When does that end?
I have no idea. Anyone do it? Tell me, tell me a time.
Five, it's five.
Five? Alright. October 7th now is the light of. Yeah, yeah. So it should be good at 5:00, 5:00 PM on October 7th. We'll see you out there and then.
So typically we would stake out the road, but you can't misunderstand where this is because this is a gravel road right here between these two houses and you're looking right at the lot.
Okay.
Okay.
Just stand out there and leave at us as we're all showing up.
So, but if you want me to stake it out, I will. It's just.
Would you like that, James?
I think any features that would help, maybe stake out some of the, the lot setbacks. I mean, you don't have to stake out everything, but any features you think would help to.
It, it's, it's extremely self-evident.
Okay.
But what I'll do is we'll, we'll, we'll throw some stakes out the center line. So we know where we're standing.
Okay.
And you'll, you'll be able to see it's 22 acres, which, which seems a lot, lot smaller on a piece of paper than when you stand on there.
Yeah.
It's pretty big.
Yeah. So, all right. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You don't have to stay if you don't want. You can go. I just, you're, you're.
Diesel.
Yeah, my Diesel. Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright.
Good night.
Moving right along to the next sketch plan for the next major subdivision in Berwick. So this one is the seven multifamily units in an existing building at 170 Pine Hill Road, which is in the R1 and R2 zone. James?
We have Neil, the civil engineer and Art, the architect here. This is the existing building at 170 Pine Hill Road. The plan includes some site improvements. The building will be sprinkled and the sprinklers will be reviewed by the state fire marshal. We have capacity letters from water and a note from, a memo from fire. And I believe that the applicants have addressed the chief's request. I, I, there's some, there's been some yard, yard debris in the front yard and I, I think we should look at it in the slay walk and I don't think we should act on the application until that's picked up and addressed. My, my opinion, that's probably more of, more of Jen's call, but it's been out there. It's been cleaned up. It's come back. But, you know, that, that's, that's really up.
Is that your opinion, Jen? If you can hear us? I think she's frozen up the ball fields, but if that's, if that's what.
I can hear you.
Okay, there she is.
Can you? Yeah, absolutely. I agree with what James is saying. And there's a couple of other things that as we go through the process that we're going to chime in on and discuss as you guys are going through the process of this application as well.
Okay, thank you. So this is right before the Fox Ridge condos on the same side of the road immediately before it as you're headed out of town.
And it's already a building.
Yeah, it's like a big blue siding building.
And one thing we caught, one of the cover letters said that there are two, there are seven two-bedroom apartments and then this, I believe the proposal is for seven three-bedroom apartments.
Yeah. So the, yeah, the July 26th letter right here says seven two-bedroom apartments. So I'm, so these are the ones that were all sent to all of the, so that it was sent to, let's see, so the water department had seven two-bedroom apartments. Eldridge got that sewer department. It says seven two-bedroom apartments. Fire's fine. So it's just those two that it says seven two-bedroom apartments. So we would want to see those amended and resent to reflect the correct number of bedrooms.
I think we can get those out and back to those guys pretty quick. They usually respond, usually respond pretty, yeah, pretty promptly. So.
Yep. Thanks, Neil. Not requesting any waivers. Thank God. Any other questions? If we're not going to act on this, that we can send them back with before they come back for completed application? No?
I mean, it meets like the current land use, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, there's nothing else?
Yep.
I did have a question.
Yes.
And, and I think I know the answer, but I'll ask anyway.
Okay.
It's kind of an unusual situation where this had previously been approved.
Yeah.
I know 10, 12 years ago. And they started construction resulting in the building where it is
Right.
being unfinished. We had approached the town to Jerry Leterz here, the owner, to help him get it resurrected.
Right.
And it was at that time that Jennifer and James let us know that we had to come back to the planning board because too much time had passed.
Yeah, yes.
So given that we were, we are trying to get it resurrected and trying to get things going. We were hoping that we could approach this as an approval for an applicant, the application versus three meetings.
Nope, because our code enforcement officer wants the lot cleaned up before we even approve the application. So I have to, I have to go with her. She's the expert. I have to answer to her.
I think no matter, I mean, we might be looking at three meetings no matter what.
Well, yeah, we've got, we've got some big, yeah, we have got, we got a lot. We got some big meetings here.
So the, the current.
Did I interrupt?
Yes.
I encourage you, Art, is if that's Art that's standing at the podium right now, you guys are kind of freezing a little bit. I encourage you to bring in Jerry and let's do a pre-construction meeting as well as you're going through this process. That way we don't have any questions that are unanswered after.
We'll set up a time with you.
The only issue I had, I, I do see that they're recommending a pressure booster pump for, for your water pressure. And, and there's no mention of that with regard to the sprinkler system. I, I'm just curious as it, as it specifically states on the third floor. Is that one, is that pressure pump, is that something that is the responsibility of the municipality or the builder? That to, to get that pressure?
Good question. You stumped, stumped me on that one. Where, where?
So I'm on the page, Berwick Water Department specifically is saying that they need, the pressure in that area is around 30 to 40 PSA, PSI. You may want to consider incorporating a booster pump to get decent pressure to the third floor. So if the issue is residential service, if we have too low of a pressure there, a few pages deeper, I see the Berwick Fire Department, you know, calling out the requirements for the sprinkler system. I just want to make sure we're, we're pushing enough PSI to supply that sprinkler system, but more importantly, does that fall on the town? Or does that fall on the, on the developer?
Any, I mean, I would, it's a booster from, from the water lines into their building. So that's probably internal to their building, I'd imagine.
In the building.
I would, I would imagine so. And is that, is that part of the plan? I haven't, I haven't looked through this plan yet.
Yeah. That, that's my biggest question. I mean, you know, yeah, it's minor inconvenience to the people who are living there, but more importantly, you know, the safety of our public servants that would have to respond. Is there sufficient PSI to supply the, the sprinkler system? Would be my biggest concern.
One of the things we can do is check with the water department in terms of if they've done any pressure tests in that area recently as well.
Okay, that would be excellent.
That area actually is like the, the stand pipes right there.
I was gonna say, the towers right there. They should have great.
No, it's, it's the opposite because.
Oh, really?
Because they don't get enough.
Oh.
If you don't have the head, you don't get the pressure.
Yeah.
I'm not an engineer.
I know. I lived right below the water tower in North Berwick for 12 years.
Yeah. So, and then this, did you say the state has, the state fire marshal has to review this anyway?
Yeah. So we would make sure to follow up on Phil's inquiry.
Right.
At the state fire marshal. I mean, I, I imagine that's part of it, but we can make that, to make it a condition and make sure it gets, it's taken.
But the pump is town water department responsibility or the?
It's the owner.
It's the owners. Okay. All right.
And if there is one, I would imagine that we would maybe make a condition of the, just the maintenance of that because that's a kind of a big deal and something that.
I just want to make sure the fire marshal's happy. I mean, you know, if you got low water pressure to supply residential, you certainly have low water pressure to supply sprinklers.
Yeah.
A yearly.
Yep. Okay, good.
Right. I'm sure the system, if it gets approved through the fire marshal's office, they'll, they'll have requirements for, for testing and for minimum pressures as well. So.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
And then the, the thing that I saw was the, with Chief Plant for the fire department about the, the turning radius for their aerial ladder trucks. And since this is a three-story building, but was that amended?
Yep. What, what we ended up having to do, I'll, we'll pull up the screen here. So what we ended up having to do is we had to pull this, this drive here down towards, down towards the south of the lot by about six feet to accommodate this. And then we widened out, widened out the opening into the parking area to accommodate, to accommodate the truck. So we have, we have swing, we have swing out around the, around the paved area. And so the, the truck, the truck makes it through there to say that the, you know, the, the overhang and everything stays within the, within the pavement. It doesn't, it comes out over the, you know, over the graded area. But it's basically designed so it's, it doesn't hit anything, any of the, of the light posts or the, or the cars that come through. And so it would, yep, so it'd sneak through there. I did sit with, with Chief Plant and, and discussed, and discussed how to get around. And I think we were, we were in agreement by the end of that. And we just, we just basically just tweaked this entrance down to the south a little bit. So it gives them a little more, a little more room up here to pull that truck around.
Great, thank you. What's the size of this lot? Because this lot goes way back, doesn't it?
Yeah, let me go back.
And what is back there?
Well, go back to the existing conditions plan here. Get you a little.
I actually had a buyer for this property and we went through that building. And I noticed that long driveway down the left-hand side.
Yeah, yeah. What, what that is, that's a right of way. You see my screen up there? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. So you see this, there's a long right of way to La Pierre lot. It's, it's kind of marooned in the middle of the lot here.
Okay.
But that's been, that's been in existence for, for years and years.
Yeah.
And that's, that's proposed to, to just remain as is. Then, yeah, then the Leterz lot comes around and there's an open area to the back here. And I know, James, if you wanted me to just start getting into the spiel about the, about the development or not, or if you were.
What development?
Just what we're, what we're proposing down here.
Oh, oh, that's.
It seemed like, it seemed like he hadn't, it seemed like he hadn't gotten through his, his description yet. So I didn't want to jump in early.
Oh, no, you can spiel.
I'm done. I spiel. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, let's hear the Neil spiel.
He speels better than mine.
All right. So I'm Neil Reposem, civil consultant. On behalf of Jerry Leterz. And as James indicated, this was, and Art indicated, this was a site that was previously approved back in 2008. Was the last time it got town approval. And we're proposing to use the same structure as we discussed, and it will be the seven, the seven three-bedroom units. So that'll be updated to the, to the water and sewer. I did have discussions with them and they, they didn't seem too concerned about any of the, any of the capacities, but we'll get that, get that in writing for you guys. The, the lot itself is, is actually quite a bit different as far as grade wise and some of our stormwater implementation that we have out here compared to the first, you know, the first approved plan. And that is due to, you know, some upgrades and changes in the DEP requirements in case this ever, you know, any expansion ever happened out here and they wanted to get something that would trip that stormwater treatment, which is now it's much lower standard, you know, lower threshold than it used to be. So we made sure that we had everything out here sized and designed to meet all the newest upgraded stormwater BMP manual. We also modified the parking compared to what we had approved prior. And that's just to incorporate some of the features that, that the architect has put into the building as well as an accessible route, which was, which was kind of hard to come by in the other building. It was, it was done by, you know, ramp at the front, which was tough to navigate. That's what we ended up doing is we, we created a ADA ramp that's, that's a kind of slope such that it doesn't require the, the handrails or, or anything like that, or the landing. It's a gentle slope coming up to the, come to the front of the building now. So it'll, it'll blend into the, blend into the, you know, the yard and the, and the landscaping much better than what we previously were going to have to do. It's going to be a big, you know, three-sided ramp with a platform and a ramp to another platform to get up to that, to get up to that living floor here. But the way we've, we've regraded the lot, we're able to sneak up into there and, and keep that an ADA ramp without, without any, you know, further obstruction in there. So it's one of the, one of the big things we were trying to do with it. It has, it has the required, the required parking out here. We're, we're showing a dumpster for the, for the tenant use. These gray areas that you're seeing, you know, surrounding the parking lot, these are all the stormwater management treatment areas. So those have modified slightly from that past approval, but they're, as I said, they've only been kind of improved and, and made more efficient from what we had before. And as Art said, it is, it's a use that was, that was previously approved and we're trying to get it, we're trying to get the whole thing kickstarted again and get this, you'll get this lot, you know, active and, 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 you know, kind of a more productive piece of property than it's, it's kind of been stagnant for a while. So just trying to get it going again.
If I could add a little bit to what Neil mentioned is when we jumped into this and took a look at the existing building, there are things that we tried to do with that ramp coming in so that we have a, we meet the FHA requirements and have an accessible type B unit. There, it's, it's kind of a funny split level entrance at the front. So it was very difficult to get into the units otherwise. And the other thing that we have done in terms of looking at the building was trying to bring it up to code in terms of what was done on the inside. There are some issues with the stairway that we've been able to solve and, and a lot of other things like that, that we're trying to, trying to get it to where it needs to be.
Does it, is there a requirement? I know for like condos and multi-unit fire breaks between the units, is there, is there room in this building or is the building already been designed with those fire breaks between the individual residences?
Each residence will have a half hour fire rating between them as, as required by the code. And then the stairway, because of the, it's a three-story building, that lower level qualifies technically as a basement.
Okay.
So we're three levels plus a basement. And that, that creates a four-story stair. So we have a two-hour stairwell
Okay.
between the apartment, between the units and the stairway.
Okay.
And that was part of the challenge that we had to, had to solve.
Um, just one of the things that's a, you know, I'm, I'm doing on my hot button topics in the, in the town of Berwick is that because this is a major subdivision, if I'm not mistaken, the school superintendent does have to be notified as well with a, and respond with a letter of the capacity, their, their ability to, or their adequacy. their, their ability to, or their adequacy to accommodate that. And since we have so many major subdivisions in front of us over the next month, it's really important that we let the school superintendent, who is currently trying to get buildings built, know about how many people we are bringing into our beautiful little town.
Yeah, I, I will get, get ahold of Audra and I'll, I'll have her give a statement on that too.
Thank you.
I'll be talking to her multiple times a day.
I, you know, if you're working on any of our other major subdivisions, just get, get all of them because I'm gonna have you do it for all of them.
Okay, sounds good.
Do you have any questions?
Since it is considered a four-story building.
It's actually three stories.
Three-story. Does, does there have to be an area of refuge on any of the floors designated?
Because of the sprinkler, it does not. Okay.
Mother.
Alright, Paul?
No, I'm good.
Mike?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Nothing for him.
Amber? You're on mute. Something's not happening. I have a feeling she's saying I'm good though. I can hear you.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so I think you've heard enough from us. We'll see you back.
To a September sixteenth sidewalk.
September sixteenth, we're doing a sidewalk. That's gonna be a long night. Can we do the sidewalk at like, I mean.
I'm sick of that thing.
Yeah, me too. I guess we'll do it at five and should we do it at four-thirty? I'm just saying like, it's, we're gonna be here for a long time. I want to make sure everybody like eats before they come into our meeting. I would like to do, alright, let's do four-thirty just to make sure everybody eats. I'm a mom.
Four-thirty, I'll bring sandwiches.
Eating. Neil, thank you, Neil.
An Arab bread sounds good.
There you go.
Alright, so sixteen at four-thirty. Great, thank you, Art.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yep, thanks, Neil.
You can leave.
Next item on our agenda is the second, thank you. We'll see you in a couple of weeks. The next item on our agenda is the second public comment session, open to anybody under the purview of the Berwick Planning Board. Seeing nobody come forward, I'm gonna close the public comment session and move on to informational items.
Yeah, so starting Monday, I'm gonna be the town manager of Berwick. Thank you very much. You folks are an awesome planning board. I think you've learned very quickly. And my first task will be hiring, trying to hire a new planner. We're looking at possibly hiring a part-time planner that will work with Southern Maine Planning Development Commission. So you have Lee Jay from SMPDC. He's very familiar with Berwick. He's awesome to work with. And he'll be here in October. So I'll be here for September and I'm not going away, obviously. I'm just going up one floor. But if you guys need anything for support, don't hesitate to, to reach out. It'll, it'll be a slow transition. I want to make, I, I was talking with Lee Jay and Paul at SMPDC about making sure that anything that's ongoing, try to close out those loops. So I might be at planning board through October until Lee Jay's taking on new applications.
Yep. Yeah, that makes sense.
But yeah.
Cool.
Thank you all.
We're all very proud of you.
Thank you.
I remember when you were just like the assistant. I remember when you were just the envision, envision Berwick dude.
Idealistic downtown.
Look at you now. While I'm in the corporate ladder. Anybody else have anything? No, seeing as nobody else come forward with information, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
If there are no further issues for consideration from the depths of the Berwick Town Hall and the esteemed Burgess Meeting Room, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Alright.
Second.
Alright, so moved.